And then, yeah.
Yeah, right where she's, uh, well, one other thing we're gonna take out of here.
So, I want to change, I did change a couple of draws foundation. Got me some ideas for the draws part.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Into it first, before the training, right?
And as a history.
Okay, she could be here. If he's not here, it doesn't do it. No, no, it's fine. What brings you? We talked about that, was it? No, no, it's fine. What brings you? We talked about that, was it?
Eat bonbons.
Yeah, sit in front of the fire. Yeah, sit in front of the fire is a good place to eat and drink.
Move the table side. I changed it every time. I got lots of, lots of pour sample.
You want to take the wall?
What?
You might have to take the wall, make it small fish.
We're recording, so whenever you're ready to go.
I'm trying to be ready for you. Okay. All right, six oh three, we'll go ahead and get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item number two. Yeah, swear in the, uh, I don't know about the new mayor, but.
Okay, who can you first?
Sure.
Tell me if you want to.
Okay.
Okay. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution, Constitution of the State of Utah.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Good job.
All right.
Okay, number two.
Together, okay. Right here.
Okay, I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution.
Obey and that's the Constitution.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Great. It's a little work. Um, okay. Next item is appointing planning commissioner, um, so, Bob Murphy has been on the planning commission for some time. His term has expired. He has expressed interest in remaining on the planning commission. And, um, so it's time for reappointment.
A two-year term.
To a two-year term. And it actually would begin, does it start now? Probably, yeah, probably from the last one expired since December, so we're a little behind, but. No, no big deal there, so, uh. Basically, that's where we're at, so I will entertain a motion on that issue.
I will make a motion to retain Bob on the planning commission.
Okay, good enough.
All right. Shiana.
Aye.
Clayton.
Aye.
Mayor's aye.
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 Right. There you go.
I'm pretty fine.
Shiana.
Yes.
Sorry, you second.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, next item, we have Shar Lindford with us. Shar, uh, I don't know, she was happy to, but she, she did a great job. She took over Rees Across America when Ennis got ill. And so she won just a couple minutes on the agenda tonight, so we'll turn the table over.
Am I okay right here?
Uh.
Where do you want me?
You're okay right there, okay.
Um, on behalf of Rees Across America, this is easy. I, I looked around and most of you have familiar faces to me now. Thank you for, um, your commitment, your dedication, your willingness and your support. Uh, yeah, I picked up the, the project at the three weeks, um, left and only had four days to meet deadlines, um. So I, I grabbed the phone and everybody that I knew and those of you that I didn't know but know very well now, and I really appreciate your, your support and your help and your dedication and your commitment, not only to your, to your city, but, um, to the veterans. We, uh, were three hundred and seventy-three graves decorated. That's a lot in six cemeteries. Um, we gathered four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and, um, everything went well. Uh, everybody was pleased. I guess the, the greatest compliment, if not the greatest burden, was I guess next year, um, Clint, Jeremy and Clayton, um, they want to expand it to the other cemeteries. Um, we had the honor guard and the fire department in Francis and Marion and and Oakley felt deprived and Pio said, why not? And so we'll see what we can do next year, whoever's in charge. Um, but they did appreciate it. A comment that was specifically made, Clinton, and it goes directly to you, um, the veterans, um, and the, and the population that was there, um, deeply appreciated your insights and, um, your background and things that were said. And for those of us that spent all day long in all six cemeteries, overwhelmingly, they said Francis and its ceremony meant the most. Um, it was more deeply felt. And I think because of your background and your commitment as a veteran, it made all the difference in the world. And my last, um, coordinators meeting with the six site coordinators due, where the deuce, um, said, can we have Clinton in all six cemeteries, so we gotta negotiate.
It was an honor to be here with that.
Well, it was my pleasure and I really appreciate those that were so, so involved, Jeremy, the day before, but I finally realized when somebody said horses and I went, really? So, thank you very much for that, um. The cemeteries are all cleaned up. Um, the last meeting that we had, I, I told the six dupe to have it off by the sixteenth, but I looked at the weather and said, we're never gonna make it, um, with the snow, so. Um, my husband and I buckled up and we got all the graves in all six cemeteries gathered up. And so your Francis Cemetery should be, um, cleaned up and the cemetery district gathered, or let us drop the wreaths off in the dumpsters, so. That, that's done. Um, with the last three weeks and with my urgency and not knowing exactly what was expected of me, um, it was, God bless Suzanne, um, we sat down and tried to figure out where some checks were and we didn't find them until middle of December, and my deadline for all the money was the twenty-eighth of November. Well, I sat down with Suzanne and we figured it out, um, that the four checks that were sitting on the kitchen table, um, that obviously was not sent. I think Ennis said that there would be a thirty-six inch ceremonial wreath, um, with military flags and the eight smaller wreaths. The eight smaller wreaths were donated because we bought so many, but the ceremonial wreath was never ordered. And obviously, the reason being was because the checks were never sent. So I'd like to give, um, the two hundred and fifty-six dollar check back to Francis City. You, um, were kind enough to buy the one canvas and so Suzanne and I figured out where the extra fifty-two dollars and why your check was larger than the other cities, so. I'd like to give the two hundred and fifty-six dollar check back. Um, it was dated the twenty-first of November, so Suzanne, if you'll take it back and either void it out or whatever, and then we'll proceed with wherever we are, uh, the fourteenth of December of next year, but. Thanks again for all your support and your commitment, your dedication and thank you for letting us be a part of your, of your city.
Thank you. Um, I'll say, from my personal experience, I'm sure Clayton. It, it was, uh, it was an honor for all of us to be involved in that, um. The only thing I would hope for next year is that it gets a little more, uh, well-attended and more people are involved, because I think they're really missing out on a, on a meaningful experience, so we appreciate your stuff and taking care of it. Um, we can commit to, to being a part of it and, and, and supporting the efforts again in the future and in the coming years, so. Uh, I would like to see it continue and I'm sure everyone else here would as well, so. If, if you're in charge or someone else, send them our way, we, we certainly want to support the, the effort again, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, with your permission. Oh, well, we'll, uh, we'll take a couple of things out of order real quick. Actually, I guess just one. Uh, I'd like to move item nine A, the audit report, next, and then, uh, that way, Ben, right?
Yes.
Ben, if you go home, you're gonna have to sit through all our training, all that stuff. So if, if that's okay, I'd like to leave that. Anybody, can we issue that? Okay, audit report, you're up.
Thank you. Let's see, Suzanne, you get involved up.
It shows the number one.
Yeah, it's, okay.
Good. Well, uh, I'm Ben Probst with, uh, David Stewart, CPAs out of Provo. Here to present to you the June thirtieth, uh, financial report for twenty twenty-three. Uh, before I start, I just want to thank Suzanne for providing us with her time and giving us the information that we requested as we spent a couple of days up here going through invoices and records, verifying, and confirming various things as we do our fieldwork and reviewing the, the records that are kept. Uh, basically, our report starts on page one and two and there's just one paragraph that read to you and basically states the opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present per in all material respects the respective financial position of governmental activities, business club activities, each major fund and aggregate revenue fund information of Francis City. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in respect of change in financial position and cash flows where applicable, and the respective budgetary comparison for the general fund there for the year then and in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Basically, that's saying you've got a modified opinion best you can get. And that's for CPA's terms, I guess, in that sense. Um. We, uh, have one finding that we went through this year. I think one of the findings we always have every year was the fund balance that we were able to, being too high, we haven't been spending money, but, uh, that, that was actually, uh, set aside in the capital projects fund and so we're in compliance this year. Is that prior funding. The, the finding we had this year is, uh, state officers requested every year that, uh, fraud risk assessment be done annually, submitted. Uh, it was completed, but it was not submitted on time, so it's just a reminder of technicality, but, but we listed that as a finding since the state's requesting annual use to see state officers, so. Rather than that, uh, state compliance is, the city's doing well, complying with what was required. Also, I see that you're having your open public training, which is one of the steps we look at every so often, usually every three years or so. But one of the things is in the new, uh, council members have to do that and have an annual, um, training, especially with the Open and Public Meetings Act and things of that nature, so. That's our report. I don't know if there's any questions. Glad to go over that, if not, we can always give you a call and, and we'll discuss that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That's, uh, I think, uh, a testament to Suzanne and her taking care of business with the, with the money, um. I, I think, just to, to state publicly that, you know, I don't think it's any small thing that we're usually doing well and things are correct, and I think that's important, so. We appreciate Suzanne for taking care of that, because, uh, without, if I had to do it, it would not, the finance would be much different on the surface, so. All right, um, next thing, Open and Public Meetings Act training.
All right, Sherri, I'm gonna go ahead and put you up on the,
Okay.
on the screen, so everyone can see you and then they'll be able to see the screen.
Thanks, Ben.
Sherri.
Thank you.
Okay.
Then you can turn the screen on. Just give me a minute and I'll let you know when we're, we're already here.
Okay.
Okay, so you're good. Go on, go ahead.
Um, can you make it so that I can share my screen?
Oh, I thought I had already done that. Okay, you're gonna have to share a screen. Okay, I'm gonna bring you back to my screen for a second, so I can actually see what I'm doing here. I. Okay.
Uh, here we go.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I appreciate you guys being willing to let me do this, um, remotely. Um, I was supposed to be up there doing this for Oakley last night and ended up doing it remotely as well. Um, 'cause I'm pretty sure I just didn't want to drive into the snow. Um, so I have met some of you, um, those of you that I haven't, my name is Sherri Pippen. I work for MAG, Mountain Land E O G. Um, I've been hired to work with small communities on a whole variety of things. Um, next week I've got meetings of cities that need help with financial reporting, personnel policies, purchasing stuff, budgeting, um, basically all of the administrative stuff that a city does. I've been hired to help cities make sure it gets done and find ways to, find ways to improve how your city handles, stuff like that. Um, one of the things, I think you guys are all aware, particularly those of you that have been on council for a longer time, and every year, every city council member in the State of Utah is required to go through training on the Open and Public Meetings Act. Um, and a lot of times that gets wrapped into a few other trainings. Um, so we're gonna talk some about powers and duties. Um, a lot of which are outlined in state code. And then we'll go in specifically to the open and public meetings training. And then we will talk a little bit about land use at the end. Um, but I have some other resources for you guys that you'll be able to access for that. Um, the first thing that I want to talk about is the differing types of decisions that you as a city council will make. Um, because you know, or you will come to know that you wear different hats when you're acting in, uh, when you're acting in the capacity of the city council. Um, so I'm gonna do this version that will back up to the powers and duties. When you are acting as city council, uh, there's gonna be three different types of decisions that you're gonna make, that you're gonna be faced with. Uh, there's legislative, administrative, or quasi judicial. There, I mean, pretty well is laid out what the decision involves. Legislative issues, legislative decisions, you take policy questions, things like, how tall do we want to allow homes to be, how wide do we want our roads? Are we okay with people keeping bumping down cars in their backyard? Things like that. You take those questions, have conversations, and turn them into policy. Generally speaking, the planning commission will make legislative recommendations, but will not make legislative decisions, because they're not the legislative body. The second decision type is administrative, and like it says here, administrative decisions apply the law once they're enacted. Administrative decisions can be made by staff, they can be made by the council, they can be made by the planning commission, or you have other, uh, formal bodies if the city has created. Those, um, there is discussion that goes on in those, but really, it's just evaluating requests for our business license or some other type of land use, is usually what administrative decisions are. Or your contracts and things like that, and you're applying the law that you previously made. And then the third type of decision is quasi judicial. This will almost never go to a planning commission. Um, but frequently it will go to a city council or it will go to something like an appeal authority, an administrative hearing officer. It depends on how your city sets it up to handle appeals and decisions. And that is when whoever is, is making the decision has to look at the plain language of the law and decide how the request fits in or how the appeal fits in with the plain language of the law. Um, a lot of times if you're being faced with a decision that's quasi judicial, you're really gonna want to get your city attorney involved in helping you understand what the issue of dispute is and how the city council should weigh it. Because, like, you know, it says here at the bottom, how the council weighs a decision and your ability to approve a decision, deny a decision, is getting very based on the type of decision. Legislative, you have fairly broad, fairly broad authority, because no policy regarding the request has been said yet. Administrative. City councils will frequently have conversations with an applicant or whoever's asking the question or making the request. But administrative, really, all you can do is evaluate the decision, not the scheme, not the decision. Evaluate the request against whether or not it complies with your city code and then if it complies with your city code, they are entitled to have it approved. And then quasi judicial, you even have less for, for, less woodwork than you do with administrative decisions. Because that, you have to look at the exact language of what's written in the city code. Um, hopefully you have been provided or will be provided with hard copies of the slides that I'm gonna go through. This QR code, I should have written on it, but this QR code at the bottom will take you to about a six-minute video by this city of Utah property rights on Hudson, where he was in more detail, um, about three different decision types. So when you're having staff prepare, staff reports, or when the council's making any kind of a decision, when you're having a kind of conversation by request, it's really good to bear in mind, and even if you do have staff reports, have on there what type of decision it is, so that you understand the parameters that you have when you're weighing, um, when you're weighing whatever the request is. Um, there are, I don't know how many of you guys watch Parks and Recreation, but almost every professional presentation I've done since the TV show was on has some reference to it. Um, it's funny and painfully, uh, spot on with some city council things. Um, so one of the things that I wanted to talk about a little bit was powers and duties of city and town councils. Um, the League of Cities and Towns has just come out with a refighting handbook that I would recommend you guys get a couple copies of that brings the powers and duties and breaks it down, um, from sometimes the technical jargon that happens in state code. And it sort of breaks it down into easily digestible pieces. Um, but like I said, they just barely came out with a twenty twenty-four edition of that, so I recommend you guys get a couple copies of that. Because that will, that will expand and make easier to understand what is set in state code. Uh, so Utah code, um, lists probably about forty or fifty things. And this QR code will take you directly to Utah code where it outlines all of the different powers and duties that a city council has. I just picked a handful of them that I felt like were fairly representative of the main things that city councils do. Obviously, the thing that, that pops into most people's heads first has to do with money. City councils are responsible for controlling the city finances and property to making sure that municipal debts and expenses are provided for. And obviously, this is something that probably you guys are gonna start working on, whether it's at a staff level or council level. You'll start working on it probably within the next couple of months, is putting together the budget for the next fiscal year. Part of that budget is making sure that the necessary money is appropriated. Um. The third one, providing necessary public services. That doesn't necessarily mean that the city has to be the service provider. A lot of cities will contract out, uh, especially things like, uh, garbage, uh, frequently, sometimes people will contract gas sewer, things like that. Just so as long as the city has some mechanism, whether it's providing themselves, like for inter-local agreement, that those public services are provided for, for everyone living your boundaries. Um, and that's gonna be the basic things like water, sewer, fire, drainage. Um, and then road maintenance, maintenance, things like that. Um, you also have a responsibility for making sure that all of the municipal infrastructure is provided for. If there comes a point when you need to expand your city building, or you need to acquire a new one, or you need to put in a major road project or upgrade sewer lines, things like that, um, you have the authority to borrow the money for it and then to collect the fees through in-hack fees and utility service fees. Um, to ensure that those lines are maintained and that, and that the debt is paid back. Um, and then there's those other couple of things that you can delegate power, you can create all the rules and regulations, and you can start real discovering how businesses can be conducted in your town. Um. So that's just, like I said, I will send you guys more information on powers and duties once I get my hands on one of the books, which hopefully will be on Tuesday. Um, but I would, again, I would recommend you guys get a couple copies of that. Are there any brief question, not brief, you can ask me some questions if you want. Are there any questions about powers and duties before I go into open and public meetings?
Doesn't look like we have any questions.
Great, great. Um, so one other thing that I will say about that is one thing that, um, doesn't really get talked about a whole lot, because it varies from city to city, that I didn't get into with yours is things like who handles what request? Like who we want to vote to for building permit or business license, or things like that. There's, there's no broad guidance. There's, there's no broad guidance. It's up to each city kind of to decide who is going to handle all those requests. And so I don't really go into that with powers and duties because it is widely up to you guys. The one thing that I would encourage you to do when you're looking at what council's going to look at, what planning commission's going to look at, what staff can approve, is to bear in mind that things that are administrative decisions, by and large, I would recommend you may not have to go to the city council for. But again, that's only administrative, or it's just, does it need it? Yes, we can't tell no, or thinking to be told yes. So, that's the one thing I would encourage you guys to do on that is to make sure administrative decisions are handled, not by the council. Now, to the Open Public Meetings Act, um, and this, the slides that I'm going to go to, I'm not going to go through all thirty-six of them. About half, I'm only going to go through about half the slides, partly, because I'm sure you guys would be listening to me if I talked for that long, but also because about half the slides are more, they're not specific to the act. They're guidance on how to run an effective city council meeting, rules of procedure, like recommendations, things like that. Um, so those are good to have, which is why, um, I sent all of them on to your staff, but I'm only going to go through about the first half. But if you want, if you love training and want to watch a video that does go into detail on those, this QR code will take you through the all thirty-six slides. It's a video that the League of Cities and Towns put together. So, I, Open Public Meeting Act, it's pretty, the general purpose of it is pretty self-explanatory. And, you know, I, I feel for those of you who have heard this many times before. But it's, it's a simple purpose. As the city council, you need to conduct the business of the public openly with full transparency. Any administrative advisory executive or legislative body that's created by Utah Constitution, any state statute, city rule, city ordinance, or city resolution that has two or more people, expensed, dispersed, or is supported by tax revenue, and is vested with the authority to make decisions regarding the public's businesses is considered a public body. One thing that I've been asked about that is not considered a public body, even though it needs the majority of these regulations, is like a DRC, Development and Revenue Committee. Usually, that's just staff that handles those. And as a general rule, things that are entirely staff, your engineer, your attorney, your planner, things that are entirely staff, as a general rule, are not public body. Largely because, even though strictly speaking, they're supported by tax revenue because that's how staff is paid, because they're not the ultimate decision makers, it's number four, really, that makes it so that, makes it so that staff doesn't, doesn't count, staff meetings don't count as a public body because ultimately, they're not the final decision makers in a lot of things. A public meeting, at any time, a corner is present, and you're going to be discussing, receiving public comment, reacting in your capacity, your official capacity as city council members. I do have a question for you guys here. Most cities during the pandemic, passed an amendment so they could have meetings remotely or electronically, is that something you guys already have in place?
No, we did do it temporarily, but I don't think, it's not permanent, Suzanne, it's not permanent.
Okay. You can choose to craft an ordinance, allowing people to participate electronically. There is, um, I've been in meetings before where, where council members have been out of town, out of the country, things like that. And they can, they can remote in and fully participate electronically. So, the one downside to being able to communicate electronically is that there have been instances where, where cities have taken, not just cities, but where people have taken this to mean that they can conduct city business over email. Uh, that's not the case, or text message. That's very much not the case. There's nothing wrong with, say, the mayor emailing everybody or staff emailing everybody and making them aware of the situation, or bringing the email originators that came into life on something. One person sending an email to everybody doesn't violate the act. Where cities and other boards and bodies get in trouble is when somebody replies to everybody and it turns into a conversation. You guys can email each other, that's fine, that's not an issue. If you're going to reply to an email that you received that everybody else was helping on, only reply to the sender. Because then it takes you largely outside of the realm of inadvertently violating the Open Public Meeting Act. If you guys bump into each other at a park or a sporting event, or a grocery store, or whatever, a chance or social gathering, not subject to the act because it's not a public meeting. If you get together and no public funds are appropriated, no actions taken, strictly speaking, that's not subject to OPNA. However, like it says here, if you're going to get together as the city council, even if no money is being allocated and appropriated and no decision is being made, still go through the process of releasing it, just to be on the safe side. There is, there is a provision where when you have a city emergency, you need to get the city council together. This isn't an extra meeting or anything, or a special meeting or anything like that. This is an emergency meeting. I have been staffed cities where this has happened. I worked for a city up in Cache Valley, and we had a, we had a diesel spill. A diesel truck took over next to one of our wells and spilled into the ground right next to the oil house, and diesel got into the water. And so the city council had to get together really quickly so that they could vote and declare an emergency so that they could get access to the resources that the city needed to flush the lines and bring in bottled water and everything for residents. In that type of situation, and typically, emergency meetings are always like how safety situations. In that type of a situation, you can disregard the notice requirements. You still need to try and make people aware that the city council is going to need, even if it's two hours or something like that. You still have to make an effort to notify the public, but the noticing requirements are waived. And I, I cannot think of a circumstance when any public body besides, in a city, besides the city council would need to have an emergency meeting. Because like I said, it's not an extra meeting or a special meeting, an actual emergency meeting. There are, there are requirements as far as what the notice and what the agenda has to look like. You guys have excellent staff preparing your agendas. I was looking at it earlier, and this is exactly what an agenda needs to look like for a city council meeting. It gives the date, time, and place. It goes into detail on what is going to happen. And, uh, I believe that I saw, but if not, I may just not have looked in the right place, you also are required to post your meeting schedule for the year. So, if you haven't, um, casted up, I would suggest doing that so you meet that requirement. Then, with the exception of closed sessions, that we'll talk about in a minute, written meetings and recordings of, of city council meetings have to be made available for the public. There are certain statutory requirements of what those meetings have to have. And those are listed out here, again, similar to the agenda, the date, time, and place, the names of members present, and you also have to record who's not there, substance of all matters discussed. So, the retention schedule for the recording of the meeting is only three years, but the written minutes of a meeting have to be retained permanently. So, it's important that when the minutes are being created and when you're reviewing the minutes for approval of them, it's important that you get a really good idea of all of the relevant details from everything that was discussed so that if the time has passed, when the recording can be destroyed, you still know who ran it, what, why, and what happened from the minutes. And then you do need, again, you do need to record each person's vote, you do need the name of each person who commented. A lot of cities, when people get up to comment, they ask them to tell their address too. I don't know if that used to be a requirement or if people just want to know where people live, whether they're in town or not, but that's not actually required, just their name is. And then individual council members, um, and mayor can request that anything be put into the minutes. So, if one of you guys has a really good macro style of recipe, they can run the minutes, you can do that. And then everybody good enough. The recording is a little bit different, just because, like I said, the retention schedule is shorter. You cannot edit the recording, so if in two years, somebody listens to this meeting, they'll hear me say "on" forty-seven times. I try and get better at that, and it's not working. They need to have the date, time, and place of the meeting, and they need to be retained for three years. As far as when the minutes and recordings have to be released to the public, pending minutes, minutes of recordings, they're all public records of open meetings. So, they're all subject to the government records access advantage of the act. The pending minutes have to be available to the public within thirty days. So, that would be early next month. The approved minutes have to be available to the public within three days. So, you approve just that, you've got your agenda to approve the minutes from your December fourteenth meeting. So, those will have to be made available by Monday, through business days. Well, they actually have to be available by Tuesday, because today, I don't think it counts. The other thing with the minutes and recordings is that the audio recording has to be made available to the public within three days. That is fairly straightforward because it's a matter of letting your recordings, you cannot edit it. One thing that I, one other thing that I will say about what is subject to grammar, and I think there's a slide on this in a little bit, don't text each other during a meeting because whether or not it's related to what the, to what the meeting is about, all of your text communications that happen during a meeting are subject to grammar, even if it's not relevant to the meeting. There have been cities, school boards, commissions get in trouble for this because board members, whatever the board is, will text each other kind of sarcastic or inappropriate comments about an applicant or about a situation or about something completely outside of work. And those get requested, they get grammar. And there have been people lose spots on boards over it. So, don't text each other about anything during meetings. There are some exceptions to when a meeting has to be open. There are some provisions for when it can be closed. I think you guys have done a very smart thing by putting an "as near" clause on the end of your agenda. That allows you to, to go into an executive session during a meeting if something comes up and it kind of wiggles into the realm of what can be closed. Because if it's not on your agenda to potentially have a closed meeting, you can't do it. I was having this conversation with a city this week. And they said, "Look, if it goes down this road, we can just go into a closed session." And I had to tell them, I said, "If you want to have that available to you, you need to put it on every agenda." So, I think most people are aware of the types of things that you can go into a closed session for. Things related to character, confidence, mental and physical health of an individual. You know, whether it's a city council member, a mayor, a staff member. Anytime a personnel issue is going to come up in a city council meeting, that is an appropriate reason to close a session. There are some cities that have collective bargaining rooms with employees. There are cities that have pending or irregularization. I had to learn really quickly when I was a Navy City Planner not to freak out every time someone says, "I'm going to take you to court." Because that, I mean, it does happen, and it does need to be taken seriously. There was also a lot of people that tried to use that to scare me. And it worked a couple times. The purchase of real property. Cities are required to put themselves in a competitive disadvantage if they're looking at purchasing property. So, you can go into a closed session to talk about your strategy. Security systems, if you're going to get new, um, new locks or something like that, and the door may not be safe to store things in, things like that. And then, um, serve for punitive discussions and investigation into criminal conduct. A question got brought up last night in the training that I was doing with Oakley about disposal of real property, not just the purchase. I, it's not specific in state code if the council can close a meeting to discuss the disposal of real property. The disposal of real property has certain statutory requirements that allow the public to give input, there's required cafeteria and things like that. So, if you are going to have a conversation about disposing of real property, I would consult with your attorney and let them weigh in on whether or not you can close a meeting to discuss it. Because the state, state code does not specifically allow for it. So, I would consult with your city attorney before closing a meeting to discuss getting rid of real property. That happens far less, I can consult with some others. My couple other differences with closed meetings. They do have to be recorded, however, you do not have to take minutes of them. And then, similar to the recording of an open meeting, you have to label them. I would keep them in a separate safe. Keep them somewhere that not everybody has access to because the, the people that can access the recording of a closed meeting is very, very limited. That, because generally, it's protected information, and in order to release the recording- And in order to release the recording of a closed meeting, it basically has to be subpoenaed. A judge can order that they listen to it if something goes to court, or something like that. But they are not available to the general public. So a meeting can be closed if you've got a quorum. If you've got two-thirds of the people there voting in favor for it. And you do have to specifically state the reason to close. So even though you've got on here the variety of reasons, if you were to get to the point where you didn't need to close a meeting, the motion would need to be, like, I move that would be entered into closed session for the purpose of discussing reasonably valid litigation. So you do need an motion to specify the actual reason, even though it's great that you've got a broad, a broad description on it. We talked about electronic meetings already. So this is where the thing with texting during meetings kind of comes from. This is where, this is where it's become a thing, especially in the last few years. Electronic communications between members are subject to grandma, including those sent during meetings, but not necessarily about public business. So I mentioned before, try not to text each other as much as possible, especially during meetings, but even outside meetings, because those are subject to grandma. Your personal text messages are not. Your text messages to other council members and to the mayor are. But if you, if you're texting during a meeting, it's, it's the same thing. Texting between each other is subject to grandma. Your pending minutes, approved minutes, and recordings are public records and subject to grandma. But the, the recordings are only those made of open meetings. So closed meeting recordings, like I said before, are protected. Are there any questions about what's subject to grandma, what's not?
Do we have any questions? I think we're good.
Okay. This is where, so I've got some time, a little bit of time more than I'm going to talk about. This is where I'm going to stop on the Open Public Meetings Act. The rest of the slides are those that I was talking about earlier. They're just general, pretty broad guidance on how to effectively conduct a meeting. There are some recommendations on agendas, but like I said, your staff does an excellent job with the agenda. Looking at it, compared to the slides, I have no notes or recommendations. So this just summarizes what we've talked about. I'm going to skip back over to, to the slides that I had. There's, there's a video that I'm going to recommend that when you're bored and it's three in the morning and you can't sleep, that you watch. This was one that was just put out by the Vegas Cities and Towns on land use. It's about forty-five minutes long. I recommend actually you send this to your planning commission as well. It is focused on elected officials a little bit more, but still, the information on managed processes and policies in the city Utah is really, really good information. And so I recommend you take the time to, to watch that. This is a major land use change that you guys likely, or at least your staff is likely aware of. Every city in the city Utah needs to update their subdivision organs, because of some pretty significant changes to how subdivisions have to be approved. We, the league has put together a bunch of resources, our cities and staff. There's even a template that cities can use to start revising their subdivision organs. And it sets out some of these things. You guys are not subject to modern daytime housing plan. You guys are small enough that you have until the end of December of this year to, to get your subdivision organs updated. There are some cities that have to have a gun, bank, and warrant. Those are anything above five thousand. They tied, literally they tied the deadline to the modern daytime housing plan. You guys don't have to do that. And it's something that if, that if your staff wants, I'm happy to make you aware of those resources. I'm happy to help you guys work through that. But that is a major change that you guys will, will need to have happen. So that's kind of it. I hope this hasn't been the most boring part of your week so far. I know this isn't the thing everybody wants to do, but I appreciate you guys letting me do this remotely. I appreciate you, I appreciate your staff. They've been phenomenal to talk to and work with. And I think you guys have really good people working for you.
Any other questions before we let Sherry go? Okay. Thank you so much, Sherry. Thank you, Plannication, for coming. Just one thing, while we still have Plannication and City Council here that I just keep needing, I need to mention, and I keep forgetting, is if someone isn't going to be able to make it to a meeting, for whatever reason, please let me know for the planning commission, or Suzanne know for the city council, as early as you can. So if you know a month before, let us know. If you know an hour before, let us know as soon as you can, because it's important for us to be able to have as much time as needed to counsel a meeting if we have to. So please don't just not show us. Let me or Suzanne know if you can possibly counsel. God's my shield. If you might want coffee, the bookstools went over. I can print your coffee.
Should be able to email it.
Yeah, for email. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Henry. You must look good.
Can you guys say goodbye to everybody?
Hi, Henry.
Hi, Henry.
Thanks for coming.
I'm working on it. I'm getting it organized.
All right, we'll go to the next item. Item number six, consideration of approval of invoice. Register dated today and for December fourteenth. On the invoice register on page three, you will see mountainous trailers.
That was my question.
On the top of page. So this is, I'm just kind of going above and beyond here. This was budgeted for, this is a trailer for the excavator, public works. This vendor is on the state bid, their state contract list, so we can use them without requiring three bids, that type of thing. Anyway, it's a pretty big expenditure, it's fifteen thousand dollars. That's just a, it's just a good heavy-duty trailer to haul our open things off of, of course. I think we're perfectly within everything, but I, I guess basically what I'm saying is I want, I want you to be aware and then basically approve that purchase. Again, it's, it's part of the budget, it's already there, and it's a state, a state contract vendor, so we don't need three bids. So anyway, just so you're aware of what that is. Otherwise, I think everything's pretty normal, except for the, you'll see a ninety thousand, almost ninety thousand dollar portion payment to FX construction on.
And how many more payments are supposed to be?
Don't bring that up. They're pretty, they're pretty faceless. They're holding some, because they're going to have to come back in the spring and do some touch-up on it if there's any settlement and stuff like that. So we're just holding some money for.
Just holding a little bit for.
About twenty-two thousand dollars, but that covers it. Holding on to an insurance policy. Was that? Holding on to an insurance policy. Yeah. All right. Any questions on the check register or the minutes from December fourteenth? I sent some corrections to Suzanne on those minutes, so. There's no questions or concerns or, there can't vote.
Only a motion to pass the check, check register from twelve fifteen twenty-three to one eleven twenty-four, and the minutes of December fourteenth.
All right. All better?
Aye.
Aye. Ready to vote? Okay. Initial vote and pass the item. Okay.
Jeremy, can we move to nine B next? Just kicking this a little out of order, but first, our nine C, we have Cory here, the Salsama Trails Foundation.
Yep, I, I think we'd be there pretty quick, but yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go to nine, wait, what are we going to do? Nine C, right?
I think, yeah, I think we're at nine B, so let's just go back to that one later, and then to nine C first.
No, we got a couple, yeah, so, yeah, let me do this. We'll, next item is public comment. Any public comment? Okay, no public comment?
Okay, so we're the last question.
Okay, next, we'll skip nine B. Not skipping, but we'll come to it next. We'll go to nine C, the Hilltop Trail.
Come on up, if you want to go to the microphone, it's easier for us to hear the name. Thank you.
Give us, give us your name also, would you?
Sure, it's Cory Dunn. Yeah, no worries, just microphone, so it's comfortable. Hold, hold which ones in staff.
Can you turn green?
There we go.
Perfect, thank you.
Cory Dunn of Salsama Trails. Just wanted to talk to you about basically the remamp of the trail that was already existing on Hilltop. And it was, I think, built by the HOA, or I'm not sure who built it.
It was built by the developer.
Okay.
But the HOA was responsible for maintenance, but they sense, the Riverblosses enjoyed us, decided that they do not want, which they think is the city's responsibility to maintain. So it's been through some discussion back and forth.
Yeah, so a little back, back and forth, some discussion back and forth between the city and the HOA. They think we're responsible, we think they are. Ultimately, it's not worth the fight. You know, it's something that, it's part of the city, we just as well have it nice. Salsama Trails has agreed to help us with that, and so that's why Cory's here today. But basically, rather than tie this all up in litigation and fight and argue for years and years and years, we just decided, okay, whatever, we'll take care of it, especially the Salsama Trails Foundation. So that's why we're here today.
So basically, what we want to do, we're proposing to redo the trail. We've seen a lot of pedestrian traffic on that road increasing that gives new subdivisions that we have backing up to that road. So we now have the sidewalks, which is awesome, and then we have the wild little trail. So we're creating more connectivity there, and I think what this is going to do is it's going to, sidewalks and those are subdivisions, it's going to bring people to that little trail, and then it'll take them straight to the city center, so they can access the rodeo grounds, they can access the city center eventually as it grows. And then basically, I have a bid. You can roll to the next slide.
Okay, yeah, I just kind of clicked a map, but do we only go back to the beginning? Let's see.
Oh, yeah, let's go just, yeah, let's go to the bollard, the bollards, okay. So we, basically, we've got an issue where we've got this trail, isn't it? And then we've got people that have kind of these backyard driveways that are driving over. And so the cost of the trail is about twenty-five thousand. We've already got the grant money raised from bail. Thank God, they're doing something for the community. And we've got that money sitting there, ready to go. We've got a trail, a builder has agreed to do it for the twenty-five K. What he's going to do is, you know, me on our board, we have a guy that does maintenance for Mountain Trails Foundation. He understands how to build them and how to best maintain them. So what we're going to do is basically put a super heavy-duty commercial-grade weed barrier down. We're going to get rid of all of the material first, right, haul that off. And then we'll do the weed barrier. We are using the best of the best, because weed control is going to be one of our things that we're going to propose to do as far as maintaining the trail. And then we're going to go six inches above grade so that the rain and stuff can roll off that trail, and then we're going to put road base on top of that. And that's our plan. So as far as maintenance goes, we're going to add it into our trail maintenance program. The Salsama Trails, we've been around since 2016. We've got trails in Oakley that we built, a trail in New Orleans that we built. And we're working on kind of just getting more connectivity in the valley. We accomplished getting that SR thirty-two trail that's being built from right now, from Marion to Camas, and it's on the books to have it from Camas to our flashing red light here. That's on the agenda. They're raising the money to do that now. But, you know, it could be three years down the road till that actually manifests. So our goal is to just kind of have this connectivity, right? That's what we're trying to do. I'm, we're kind of more of a multipurpose trail, because I want to maintain the equestrian. We do as a board heritage, the agricultural heritage of our valley. We don't want paved paths everywhere, is what I'm trying to say. So we're kind of leaning more towards the road-based gravel versus the paved trail. The county wanted to do that paved trail down there, so that's their deal. But in Francis, that's kind of what we want to build more, is road-based trails where people can travel around on foot, on horses, bikes, wherever they want. So maintenance, it will be added to our maintenance program. What the responsibilities we want from the city are, we would love to have you guys do weed control on it once a year, because we think it's going to be three times that will require it. So we'll spray it twice a year, and then we'll have you guys spray it. And then enforce, enforcing, you know, the encroachments on the easement. We've got already on the SR thirty-two trail that we're building, we've already got people going literally fifty miles an hour down the trail, like it's the highway. And we've got people parking their vehicles, blocking it. And we actually have a couple of residents on wheelchairs that use that. So for me, it's like, I'm okay with the ATBs on it, but I want, I want encroachments not to. So for us, we would want you guys to enforce the encroachments if there are any, whether it be a ticket, you know, or a letter, and then enforcing if they made damage. So like, for example, if somebody got something on there, and we knew who it was, and they damaged it, we could maybe ticket or fine. But I think it's more of the encroachments, we just don't want people parking on it and blocking it. So with the three driveways that we have, we have three people that have driveways that are kind of driving over the trail. So for us to spend the twenty-five K in commitment to this trail, we really want those blocked off. So we talked about a couple of options, these bollards were one option that we considered. I had thrown the idea at Katie, also of those massive huge boulders that we could just put together. So it would kind of look more mountain-y, a little less national park, I guess, if you will, that's kind of the look there. But then Katie was saying that you all had kind of talked a little bit about in those areas, maybe doing a fence of some kind. I'm open to that idea, too.
Yeah, so this has been an ongoing issue that we've been dealing with, at least since I've been the planner the last three years. And that is asking some of the residents in Riverblosses to have a gate on the backs of the top. They've been driving over their trails, or driving, driving over the trail, which is really helpful with the, I mean, it's really degraded it quite a bit, so we've asked them not to. Just asking nicely, hasn't seemed to work. We have some people that are pretty, like, driving over it from hell or high water. So we've tried to think of the, some different options, bollards are one option, boulders are an option. Scott and I have discussed those quite a bit, and we talked to Luke about it, and we feel like the trail easement is only five feet, so there's really not really been the trail easement. the trail easement is only five feet, so there's really not really been the trail easement for a giant boulder. So then that leaves the space between the trail and the asphalt, which is a right of way. But we really need that space for snow storage, we don't wanna have problems for our clouds hitting the big boulders.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, I like the idea of boulders, but I just feel like for public works, that might not be a great solution. I talked to Luke about it, he, he had the idea of doing a pipe fence, um, just in certain areas. A lot of the residents there already have a fence along their back property lane. There's actually one that is encroaching that we're working with them to move their fence. But, um, but most of them are in the right place, but there are some areas where we need to put up something to block people from driving over the trail. Our attorney said that's fine, that they do not have the right to access their property from the back. We are allowed to block them from driving on the trail, so legally, we're good to do it. Boulders, maybe not the most beautiful option, so maybe we want to do like a pipe fence in certain areas. There's a whole bunch of options here.
I like that look, I think it looks nice.
Yeah. Yeah, we probably wouldn't do like too long of a stretch, there's maybe one spot where we need to, but...
It's not a lot, it's not a lot of space.
There's really not too many that would, that would need it, but, so.
We'll look at a place, if you have a fence, section of fence, and then, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a whole bunch of different fences anyway, and yes, maybe we'll...
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, well, you're gonna have a little short section, then nothing.
Yeah, we've talked about doing our own fence, or just having one long fence put in by the city, but that is gonna get pretty expensive, and then we also have to do the maintenance of that. That's probably like the best option, but it's, again, just, it's kind of, there's so many people already there that have a fence, but it's like...
Right, well, and just so everyone's clear of where this is, so this is on Hilltop, but it's really, the, the main portion we're talking about right now is, um...
Starts at scenic hills.
Yeah, from about Steve Fitzgerald's house west to, um, City Heights, right?
Yeah, so originally, what we were talking about, like, that was the original one.
Yeah.
But, but that was just so expensive, so now we're just...
Yeah, eventually, it will go all the way down to the top, but right now, the 25,000 we're talking about, and, and the maintenance and the fencing and stuff we're talking about is that shorter section.
Yeah.
From about Steve's house west.
Yeah, and it's, eventually, we would like to get to go all the way to this, that sidewalk, that subdivision, I heard it's called, it's a little further down.
Yeah.
Some even wild, um, some even maybe, and it's been...
The Hilltop.
Believe, I mean, I drove down the road with Scott, and there are a lot of easement issues that we're gonna have to work through, and, you know, some piping, you know, that we're gonna do, we may have to have a crosswalk, but honestly, what I'm gonna fight for is I'd like it to have, come all the way to the city center, where we actually have a good four-feet spread of gravel that could go to the city center, and that's gonna mean, unfortunately, some people may have to move fence, fences, one or two, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how important it is, you know. The thought I have too is, because we have the sidewalks that go into this subdivision, this could be our connection point, and we may not have to take it all the way down. So I'd like it to, but if it's gonna cause too many people to get pissy, I don't wanna mess with it. I'm thinking we just keep our little sidewalk trail, because eventually, it'll connect to Hidden Meadows, which will be really cool, and then that'll connect to, uh, what is the name of that trail? Rocky Top.
Rocky Top.
And that'll take them all the way to the reservoir, and then from there, they can jump on the, uh, Dornell Trail and take them all the way to Park City now, pretty much, because of that new, that new, uh, trail that Bob Rackey built by that new development up by Crowns Canyon Road. So that would be super cool, if we could get into where people could, non-transportation, non-herbal transportation.
Yeah, and it's all coming together, all the pieces are starting to come together, which is awesome. You've been talking with Rusty Webster about the Mountain Meadows Trails, so that's great, we're glad that you're working with them on that.
Yeah, and we'll have an equestrian aspect to that trail as well, which will be really a cool part of our community, because we'll have, be able to have that place for them, they're gonna have their own trailhead where they can park. So that will, it'll, it's gonna be more inclusive for people in our community that walk, hike, bike, ride their horses. That's kind of our goal, to have that inclusivity. But I think tonight, I just wanted to actually get, you know, permission to do it in the spring. We'd like to break ground in April, if, if it will allow, I'm gonna get Scott to come out and help flag where the portions would be off of the road, so we know exactly how much width we're working with, because the last thing we wanna do is have it go too far, and then they say, well, it's on my property, and then we've got a problem. So I'd rather just, and then the other thing I was gonna ask is to say, hey, between now and then, if we could post to the door of those specific people, because I think it's only fair, twice, not once, but twice, and then that way, they, they've gotten lots of notice before April or May, when we break ground, and then they're not raising hell, because that's not what we wanna create.
Yeah, so we just wanna be able to tell them, we're gonna put a bollard or a fence.
A barrier.
A barrier, I knew we shouldn't tell them exactly what yet. Yeah, that's true, that's a good point.
And then we put a barrier. Well, it's too bad, because they've gotten used to it, and I feel bad, because, you know, I would assume probably too, that that was my driver, and so I guess I would be upset, you know, so I would wanna have proper notice, so that if I wanted to come and complain, I could.
Yeah, yeah, we do have the non-motorized code, trail code, so it says that any trail that's, uh, asphalt trails, that are kind of like the sidewalks in some of our newer neighborhoods, those aren't part of it, so they can drive over those to get to their house, of course, but it does say anything that's like a gravel trail or a road base, that you cannot drive motorized people on it. So that, we're able to say that when we write these letters, so.
Well, in, in, in those residents' defense, the trail hasn't been maintained and passed, and so it's really just a shoulder road.
Yeah.
In their mind, I mean, we know it's a trail, but is it really a trail? To them, it hasn't been, and, and so I understand that as well, so, you know, we want to be fair, but we also know that that's part of the plan, and it needs to be taken care of, so.
Yeah, I think it's a strategic portion for people to be able to access the city center, that would be the goal, and it's, it's, it's one segment in our master trails plan that we're working on right now, with, you know, Katie getting input from her on the new developments, because we don't want trails that are just going nowhere. We want everything to link up, because the cool thing is, is if we can get the developers to, to build their portion of the trails in their subdivision or whatever, what's cool is, I can get grant money that I can bring in, and I can say, okay, we're missing a segment here, we need to link up this sidewalk with this over here, and I can raise the money to do that, and then we add it into our trail maintenance program, and it becomes part of our program, like in Oakley, those, those trails were deeded over at Oakley, but we maintained those trails. And they helped us a little bit, but for the most part, you know, it's once a year, they're going and doing weed control, or they're, they're, you know, ticketing people or finding, I don't know what they do, but, but basically, if people do things, like they take an ATV on there, and they can prove that that person did it, I don't know how they're enforcing it, but for us, it'd be, we would just want the city to have a little teeth if there was a problem, like destruction, vandalism, or I guess encroaching, or someone's gonna park a trailer on there or something. So I appreciate your time, I won't take up any more of your time, but I wanted to kind of give you guys the big picture of what we're trying to do, so you understood, like, what overall my plan is, what we're gonna do here.
Yeah, and then also, just, you know, wanted to have a little discussion about barriers and kind of what your preferences are, and we'll work out all the details later, but I just want to hear your opinion on that too.
Yeah, because we have to, if we break ground in April, let's say, April 15, somewhere between April 15 to May 15, depending on the weather, we could get bids for that between now and then pretty easily, and then we could get out and stake it and flag it, and kind of, we could all see where it's gonna be. That way, we're comfortable with where it's gonna go in and all that, so. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate all the work you're doing, it's hard work, and you guys donate your time, and it's, it's much appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Okay, so do we need to have an official agreement to do this with Salsama Trails, or is it kind of going with, uh, everybody good with that?
Would it be, would it be the city writing the letter to the people, or would it be us?
The city.
It's like city code, of course.
Yeah, it's our trail, they're helping to maintain and fix and build and all that stuff, technically, all right.
Yeah, so I think if we could get your approval, a vote, and you guys saying, hey, let's proceed with this, and then we'll make a decision about the fencing, because we have some time to do that, and like I said, it's 25,000 for the, um, the trail itself, and then we're, we're budgeting in five, seven, 10, whatever we need to budget for the barrier, or whatever it ends up being.
Okay, I think that's all.
We'll be throwing that money in from private donations.
So this is, yeah, so nice that you have been able to get the funding for this, huge for us, that's amazing, thank you.
Yeah, bail's doing something good, I guess.
All right, so...
Comments from us at all?
Yeah.
Please. I'm happy they're doing it. I would prefer that we look more towards a fence of some sort piping. I don't think a wooden fence, as you said already, we've got somebody that's gonna give us trouble.
Yeah.
Wooden ones are easy to break. The bollards, I'm just not too keen on those.
I agree.
Aesthetically, I would, I would prefer that pipe fence, and if we can all afford it.
Yeah, and, um, Luke had mentioned that Dylan, it's, you know, pretty good, well, maybe we'll contribute to maybe a better path.
All right, well, so how do we, we want to make a motion on this, we just proceed with it. I mean, they've got a bid here. I'll make a motion if we work in conjunction with Salsama Trails to revitalize the Hilltop Trail. Okay.
Okay, we can, okay, on the details for...
Thank you. Right now, it really was, really, thank you, Chris, and then we'll go back to that.
Okay, so, I have the code up here, and I'm not really fun, I'm reading too much of my staff reports, just to update. We discussed this in November meeting, um, through the table, until we have a full council present. The whole council is not present for the summer meeting, so it's table meeting, that's okay, never come, we didn't make it. So, last people again, and so tonight is on the agenda again. From our last discussion in November, it seemed like everyone was fine with most of the amendments that we're having or that we're proposing, but our sticking point was the parapet wall. Another option to be, to be as a sticking point, I'm sorry if I said that wrong, but that's probably just a start, so.
Yeah, so, I don't know exactly how the session went last time, but, you know, basically, we're talking, the parapet wall really changes the, the actual height, right, so if you say, really, if you put a parapet wall and you're essentially saying, you know... You're not gonna be able to occupy that space, but, but from the ground looking at it, it will look like a 50-foot. Which, you know, maybe that's okay, uh, maybe it's not, but that's really what I'm talking about, is, you know, that... That parapet wall being, and the, the 18 is the curve, isn't it, that these stations make a little difference. So that's really where, where we're at. Because I was here in the last discussion, I'm interested in everyone's kind of thoughts on what, what we're thinking about, and how I feel about those different heights, I'm very mixed, so, whatever, I said that.
Well, obviously, for, I don't know what to say, I don't remember, 20 minutes. So, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm... So, that, I mean, that was my issue, was to basically say, okay, cut a 50-foot wall. I don't like that, I don't, I get it, it'll represent some mechanical stuff, but to say, okay, we leave 40 feet to your roof, and then there are tents, that may be the biggest problem, I'll fix it. So I don't, I'd rather go from a regular, whatever, to a best line, but did you talk to all of them? That was my sticking point, like you said.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
No, he's, he's right, we, we've added that around, we discussed it, that was pretty much the point of contention, whether we, basically, we granted the 10-foot, like Clayton said, we're now pretty much saying you can build a 50-foot.
Right.
You're gonna have a 50-foot structure, 40-foot is the building, obviously, but...
Right.
So aesthetically, that extra 10 feet. And the point was, my point was, do we stick to the 40-foot? And have everything contained within that 40-foot? And that's what a developer or builder would have to contend with, that's a rule. You make your building fit to us, or you're gonna change. Basically, what this, what brought up was the proposed intent.
Sure.
They wanted that, to provide the equipment. Do we tell whoever it is that, no, our code is 40 feet, you have to build your structure. If you need 10-foot to hide your equipment, then you only build a 30-foot to the roof. Then, like you said earlier, it's mixed, we can see pros and cons on both sides.
Yeah.
But what's best for the city, what's best for the residents, y'all.
Well, I...
Will hotel go away, we can see benefits to the hotel, that was discussed, benefits, drawbacks to the hotel company, but do we just stick to our guns, say 40 feet's it? You wanna build in our city, then that's what you have to invite them.
Well, and, yeah, and I, and I, I think that it's, um, it's important that we look at this from a position of, you know, what, what is it that is right for the city, what, what makes sense, what works? Regardless of, you know, any proposed or out-proposed specific project. Obviously, we, you know, we know that that's a possibility, we know that that, that may change what they build or how they build or whatever, but the reality is, we need to decide, okay, within the city, what are we most comfortable with? What's the height we're most comfortable with? Are we comfortable with 50 feet, are we comfortable with 40 feet? I mean, you know, I've thought through this a hundred different ways, and... I mean, you know, I've thought through this a hundred different ways and, and I think, uh. One of the things I brought up was this project here on this corner, and, uh, you know, we were talking in that, in that meeting. I think they were a total of forty feet, right?
They were forty, they didn't have the architectural elements.
Yeah, and then, but, but then their design was just a hair over forty, and I liked that design better, and, and. Even in the meeting, I, I, I think I even said, I really like that a lot better, it's almost like we ought to just let half this little areas. Even though that isn't a good practice, right, I, I, I don't want to be in the habit of changing a couple for a specific project uh, to make their project fit or, or the city fit their project. I'd rather their project fit the city, right? And so, anyway, long story short, I've thought through this a hundred different ways, and I, and I. Thought, man, a forty foot building is pretty dang tall. And you drag up, especially when there isn't one, right? It, it's gonna be some sticker shock, there's gonna be some like, holy cow, what is this thing? And that will go away, but initially, that shock is gonna be there for sure. Um, and, and, and I, I gotta be honest, I think that's gonna exist whether we do. Whether you have overall height of forty or fifty, because if you build a forty foot building in this city right now, it's gonna be the only thing that's that tall, and you're gonna look up next down there and go, holy. That thing is tall. But we'll get, you know, you'll get used to it pretty soon, it won't matter, but initially, you're gonna.
It's happened that where the doctor's office is, that's when they let us.
Oh, yeah.
The canvas there, everybody was commenting saying, it's gotta be above high, it's too high, it's, you know, it's a monster or whatever. And that code.
How tall is that one, do you know? Probably thirty something.
Yeah, it's only the thirty five feet. It's on two forty eight.
So I guess my, my whole. I guess, direction of my thoughts on this is, we need to remove ourselves from the thought of a specific project and decide, what overall height are we comfortable with?
Yeah.
Forty feet is, then that's what it should be.
I don't care what it is, I'm like, we'll hike fifty feet.
Yeah, that, that, that's, I guess, that's exactly my question.
You brought up.
We like fifty feet, great, if we don't, don't worry about who does the specific project.
You brought up corner project, uh, and that was brought up, I can't remember which meeting, but we made them change their movement.
We did.
We made it adhere to the.
We absolutely did.
So. I personally, thinking about it for the last two, three months. We have the forty, I like all the changes came made, measurements, references, but I, I think we should stick to the forty feet. Myself. That's where I come to.
Right.
If we went down that route, we wanna just take out parapet walls altogether. I didn't find any other weaknesses in this area that even mentioned parapet walls, so.
You just say overall height of forty.
And we just wouldn't even say anything about parapet.
Yeah, because, I mean, to me, that makes sense, because it doesn't matter, right? Doesn't matter whether it's a parapet wall or whether it's the actual wall, you can't be over forty feet. Shouldn't.
Well, yeah, there was some exceptions, like.
Well, sure, there are, I know, like a, like a church fire, a van, or those things, but.
It's not quite the same as, as just a.
Right.
Exception for a wall.
But if, but if you say the building itself. Overall height is four, I mean, I don't know. For ease of enforcement, ease of all of those things, does it make sense to have the parapet wall in there or not? I, I don't know.
Well, I agree with you. We should take it out because the way it's written into eighteen inches. We've opened ourselves up, city, for liability, because that's not a legal parapet. If somebody's up there walking around, you have to have a hammer higher than eighteen inches.
Sure. I agree, that doesn't make any sense.
If you, if you put a parapet statement in there, it has to be of legal height. So now, we're just kind of dicting ourselves, saying forty feet is max, but yet, you're gonna do a two foot parapet.
And I think thirty inches.
Yeah. Hammer out, I think it's thirty inches, probably.
Our code does allow mechanical equipment. Up to ten feet above that, so are we all good with keeping that the way it is? Can't remember exactly.
So that, that was gonna be my question, if we keep it at forty. And somebody built a house or whatever, but forty, and they want to put stuff on top. Can they still put stuff on top if it's not high enough? It'll just be up.
It'll just be there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's not gonna count the end of the.
Yeah. See, and then, so, this is where I get, this is where I get sideways, because. Thinking about that, I hate that idea, right? Like, I hate the thought of having the damn elevator shaft sticking up there, ten feet above.
Yeah.
Flat roof building. But I hate.
You hate the look of a solid wall that looks like it's a self, yeah.
Using some items, I don't know what the right answer is, but. Anyway, I don't know. Cause I, cause I, I mean, I don't think you can, I don't think you can say overall height of fifty and then, or of forty and then say, you can't put any mechanical. Because that's just not gonna be realistic.
Could be.
That's, that's the rule, that's the rule.
I know for that, but is it, is it, we can make a rule all day long, but it doesn't make any sense. You know, if it comes to.
Max size is thirty feet, you can have that for your mechanical. Then you only have a thirty four five building in that. You're not gonna have more four feet.
Or you could just have every, everything in the city is thirty two feet max height, and then you have a ten foot parapet for, for non-residential. That's another option. Then you got forty two max.
I could wrap my mind around that. Cause a thirty, a thirty two foot building will give you three stories, right?
I think if we do a big change like that, the overall height, we might want to go back to planning commission, because they have, have.
Agreed.
That. But I, you know, I think any options on the table right now, we definitely have a, a big hurry to get this done, I'm sure that the call is still a lot for us to get this done, but.
Well, I've actually, Katie can attest to this, I've actually suggested that, uh, staff and council. A couple of us, however, whatever, we ought to go on a bank bill trip and go look at some forty foot buildings and fifty foot buildings.
Oh, yeah.
You know, what does that really look like? Because it's easy to sit here in this, in this room and go, well, we don't like forty feet, we don't like thirty feet, we don't like fifty, whatever, you know. And, and we can look here and say, fifty feet is. Look, let's approve fifty feet. And then, somebody built a fifty foot building, you might go. Even forty, if, if Clayton, Clayton said, okay, well, and I think I do, but we might walk up to those forty foot buildings. Do the elderly, the way we're doing that.
Yeah.
I think it would be best if we do it right. Rather than regret it.
I was hoping this developer would have his bill, so we can look at a forty foot, right? Somehow.
I don't know, he does have site control, so he, architectural approval, he's got his height now. If we change it, uh, he could go up, he wanted, but he goes down, he's locked in.
Right, I, I hate to delay this any longer than it needs to be, but I want, I don't wanna screw this up.
In the balance, general, I want eight feet, ten feet? That would be good, okay. You remember, it's been brought up to a, to the ten foot above the roof for the elevator equipment. That's only if it's an electric elevator. If it's a hydraulic elevator, all the equipment's in the basement. Is now, there's nothing on it.
And now they wouldn't be able to do that, there's a pretty high floor table, especially.
In that area.
Yeah.
Okay.
You saw it, I probably didn't.
All of that's right, that's true, you're.
Danger, swimming pool.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't wanna, I don't wanna delay it any longer than we have to, but I want to, right? Because, uh, you know. Well, you approve it fifty, you approve it at forty, and somebody gets in the building.
There, there's been a couple of ideas thrown out, um. Tonight that I could entertain. I don't like the fifty, we either stay forty, or like Scott said, you do, or Katie, do thirty two feet with a ten foot. Parapet, the height of equipment, now you're at forty two. I could go the two feet. But I don't wanna go the fifty. Or, like Scott said, you, well, thirty two feet is a three story building. Correct? Yeah, it was forty.
Yes, if you did flat, flat roof, it'd probably be thirty, thirty two.
So, ah, no, they were throwing in those other options.
Yeah, but then, you know, you're kind of, you do that, I'm just thinking about, you do a thirty two foot overall height, and you're favoring a flat roof, which maybe that would have unintended consequence. You don't like flat roofs, I don't know, especially in the virtual zone.
Right, could, no, I.
Just tell me to think about.
I mean, I, I think I could wrap my mind around forty, but.
We held steadfast with the developer's opinion. And we made him change his roof line.
So we could just say forty and just discount the parapet altogether?
I, I agree to that, yes.
Yeah, cause that doesn't, that doesn't prevent them from building a parapet wall, it just prevents them from building. A forty foot building with an in foot.
That's correct.
They could still build a thirty foot building with a parapet wall or whatever, they just couldn't.
Okay, I just, I'm not texting, anyway. The average height of a three story building is between thirty to forty five feet, so they could still be there three stories at the thirty two. With the ten foot parapet wall at forty.
Two thirty with the ten foot parapet.
But you, but you are definitely favoring a flat roof in that theory.
Yes.
With the thirty two.
Because that's why, that's why, the reason it says, what did it say, forty five? Forty five, because depending, depending on your roof line, you might have to kick that sucker up there quite a ways, right?
Yeah.
Um, for your three, for your three stories. But if you, if you wanna stay within a certain height of your maximum occupancy, you're gonna go flat.
Yeah. So wouldn't it, wouldn't it be flat with the parapet, all of your equipment up there anyway?
Right.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking about.
Well, yeah, no, all I'm saying is, if you, if you say forty foot, then that changes what roof line you could.
Like this, we said forty foot, so they've got some different roof lines, if it was thirty, they might have to do a three, maybe flat for sure.
Okay.
And, and I'll be honest, like, I don't know, maybe there's a compromise between forty and fifty, maybe forty, you know, forty five, is it? I don't know. You wanna make it so that's, you, you wanna make it so that's doable, but not, I, I don't think we should be the ones giving. I think it shouldn't make sense. But we shouldn't be changing it just to, to make one person happy or whatever. Like, we, we should, we should make the rule.
Well, we gotta.
But it's gotta be reasonable, it's gotta make, I guess all I'm saying is, we make the rule, it's gotta, it's gotta be working.
Well, yeah, I think we can probably build the thirty, if we can probably build a two story, it'll help.
Three story.
It would work.
Right.
But. They want a three story.
And I, and actually, they get, they get presented.
What was the, the forty foot?
Was, but it was a different architecture that we, we, yeah. That fit, but, and it was, the roof line was flatter. They could do it, it's just, that's not what they want to put here.
I think I cut you off, sorry.
I don't remember. Oh. Yeah, you're, oh, that's the thing, so we need to, what are our standards, what do we want?
Right.
You wanna build here, here's our list, here's our standards, you conform. We're not gonna go, oh, yeah, we like you a little bit more than this guy.
Right, no, I agree, yeah.
About fifty feet for me, it's like, that's insane.
That is also, that's a lot for, for sure.
Yeah, so it sounds like the options we kind of were talking about are, one, this paragraph where we added parapet walls, we just, we'll just take it out. So instead of adding it in, we'll just take it out. That's one option, another option is to look at the overall commercial height and taking that down to thirty two. Or just to make everything in the city be thirty two, and then for commercial buildings, they could do a parapet wall. The concern there is that it would favor the flat roofs.
I mean, it kind of, to some degree, I kind of think it makes sense to have a little higher.
But honestly, you could say, in commercial, we, we say instead of thirty two, thirty five. Just so they have a little bit more of a residential house. And that kind of keeps us in line with a neighboring city that can compete with, um, commercial projects. So that we're not.
That neighboring city, that's what their height is?
It's thirty, neighboring cities, but do they allow to have a parapet wall?
I don't know.
Because I think if it went to thirty five, then we could start thinking about parapet walls. And what we want to be there to.
Forty five or fifty to me is.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think forty is too much personally, but, but that's what it is. So if it's forty, okay, it's forty, I, I'm all for lowering it. But. There's trade-offs to every decision, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm with Jeremy, I need to go actually physically look at it, cause right now, sitting here, I'm okay with forty foot wall. And I'd rather have it hided with the fake parapet wall.
Right, well, I.
But who's gonna look that high anyway? Literally to see the equipment if they do.
Well, you only see it at certain.
If I'm driving around.
We'll see it at different advantage points.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a where you are.
You know, a, a forty foot building may look a little bit different if it's a hundred feet off the road versus.
Well, for sure it would. For sure it would. Well, a forty foot building would look different if it's dropped off in that hole versus if it's up on the other side of the street, dude, you know what I mean? You put a, you put a forty foot building where the store can, it's like, even look really tall, but you put it on the other side where it's dropped in the ground by more feet, it's gonna look good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, that. I, I think I could wrap my mind around the forty and just say, that's the overall height.
And then taking out the parapet.
Yep.
Yeah.
Then they can decide how they wanna do their building, they wanna build a ten foot parapet wall on a thirty foot building, go ahead. But you still can't be over forty foot.
I'm gonna bring it up with that. You?
Yeah.
We have to make a.
So the only thing you'd have to do is take out parapet walls?
That's it, yeah, I think we'd do that.
If we, we could make that change, I would like we'd have to go back to planning commission on that one. Mom is here, so.
I just texted everybody, they said.
You didn't pay attention. You have to email them and only get their required.
That's right.
To you. Yeah.
Do we, do we make a motion or do we just?
I think she has a motion already, put it up now, yeah. Well, we do have amendments.
There's an ordinance.
We can do these amendments, we just have to, anything you're changing from what I have here.
You can just say with the amendments.
Yeah, make the, uh, make an amendment, make it clear what you're changing, and then you go for the amendments.
I'll make an amendment, or a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty four dash oh three, with the exception that we take out the parapet wall. Allow somebody, overall height, overall height to remain at the forty feet that's in our code order.
There's a second, Clayton, second, okay. Chandler?
Aye.
Clayton?
Aye.
May it live?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Second is.
Clayton, Clayton, my goodness.
I am not good tonight.
Wait a minute, we'll text it.
Okay, so your motion, partners, with the ordinance with the exception that we take out the parapet wall, the overall height turning over to.
At forty feet, as it's already in our code. There's already stated.
Okay. Website. We have been less than satisfied with our current website provider.
Okay.
And, um. So staff has reached out to several, uh, other options. A couple of which didn't really respond, right? Anyway, we, we've, um. Got a proposal from Town Web. Um, we had a meeting with Town Web, they came, uh, might have been online meeting.
It was a virtual meeting, yeah.
I can't remember.
Yeah, they showed us.
So they, they showed us kind of their options, um, kind of how their, the backend functions and it's much more user friendly than what they're currently using. We have a lot more ability to control what's on the website and how it functions, what's shown where and all those things. And making those changes is much easier, anyway. We were pretty happy with kind of what the service they can provide. We were pretty happy with kind of what the service they can provide and what the user ability of their platform. They, you'll see in the Dropbox, kind of their proposal. There's a couple of things that they, um, what were the, somebody's going to have to help me here, there was. Yeah, there were a couple of options, one was much more involved than the other.
Well, one, I think you can do a lot more digitally, which eventually we'll have to do anyway. It's like eighteen-hundred-dollar setup fee and then hosting maintenance and unlimited support, which it does seem like they have really good support, it would be about eighteen-hundred a year. And then using their digital solution, the full package, which includes a lot of things that would be really nice for us to have, uh, it's three thousand a year. I don't know about these other options, I don't know, what are we thinking about, do we have the lead web design package? That was an option that I don't know if we were going to do that. Random email, we're thinking about switching to a dot gov instead of a dot org, it's supposed to be more secure.
Which goes along with some of the stuff that.
Yeah.
The legislators push on.
I don't know, that we can't really want to do the Facebook syndication or the embedded live stream meeting videos, we already are using YouTube, social videos, it seems to be fine. And we've seen in the past, that's another good option. So I think that total came to twenty-eight fifteen, for the options that we'd already selected, for the first year, it was twenty-eight fifteen.
I believe twenty-fifteen, that's two.
And then eighteen-fifteen, the next two, I forget, it's all set up, yeah, for the second and third year, it was eighteen-fifteen, and I, Suzanne, how much do we pay now for that?
Yeah, we're paying, we're paying eleven-eighty, one-ninety-two. And how does that mean we are going through the whole to here? So it's more like seven-hundred more.
So, so it is a little more expensive, but what we're doing now is a trade-off.
It's, it's really not exactly friendly, Suzanne and I were having issues this week just putting out agendas.
And it could be on my computer, but she could get it on her computer.
Yeah, things have been changing without us changing them.
Yeah.
Uh, there's really no support, Suzanne has looked at tons of different cities' websites and she really likes Town Web, I, from being in the meeting, it looked really good to me. Looks way better than what we're working right now.
They do a lot of smaller cities, smaller towns.
We weren't going to do the lead web design, were we?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
I don't think we were, I think what they already have in there, it looked like it would work for us, just setting it everything up and having them set up our website, it'll be fine. So I don't know that we need any other special options. Maybe we don't need the online full package. Are you going to contact with the one we're at at right now, or can you just cancel? I just don't want you to have.
Two of them we're with right now, we started out as I dot gov, then they were changed to Onyx websites, and now it's called Rain Regent.
Oh, okay.
And I think it's set up more for like stores and purchasing and stuff like that, if you look at the site.
Rather than a city.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, looking at this full package more, I kind of remember them talking about this, it's been a little bit, but like the HE license, pay reserve, I think we could add those on later.
And I think they do, what was the, what did you mention, on Wednesday? They do do a digital thing too with minutes and agendas and stuff like that.
But, but for right now, what we're talking about is just the basic hosting, getting the web, getting the website set up.
And not doing the full package though.
Yeah, not doing the full package right now, that may come up as an option later, but it, it obviously, I mean, this changes the amount we're paying now. You know, if, if we're going to go into, you know, the full package, I think we'll need to look at the budgeting a little bit different, budget for that in the future, have that as part of the deal. And then pick and choose what services we think we actually need, because some of them, if I remember right, weren't really.
Yeah, and it might be nice, yeah, that's just to get set up and have it be more basic at first and not have to worry about using all of these special services. It might be nice for us just to keep it basic and then add those later if we.
If you feel like you need it, and if you have some on there that you never use, then.
Yeah, because it, it certainly goes up to, you know, three thousand a year if you do that.
So.
Maybe that would make sense, but I don't think.
First year, second year, third year, then we'll have to renew it every three years or something like that.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me, I think that's a little bit.
Yeah, and I felt, now that I remember that meeting, I felt like the basic one would work really well for us. And I felt like some of the extra things for finance we wouldn't really need at this point.
Right.
I, did you feel the same way?
Yeah.
Yep, and that gets us down.
I feel like the digital agendas and meetings and stuff like that.
I think that's part of the basic, isn't it? I can't be there, but.
It's been like four months.
Sorry, this has been a while since we had this meeting.
Yeah, you were still young back then.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that too. So, yeah, it, it, it's, it's the basic, I, I think that it, it'll be much easier, it's way more supportive, anyway. We don't need to kick the dead horse, but I think if we want to go back after three years and look at maybe possible other options, uh, more, more services through them, that's mine. I think for now, it'll just be the, the first year, we got to pay a little extra to get it set up, and then after that, it's eighteen, eighteen-fifteens. Whatever do you guys think?
I find it.
Okay.
We.
I think what let's do.
Approve it?
What I was going to say is what let's do, that's, uh. What I was going to say is, let's make sure that this is still good.
I think it said, there was a date on there where it said proposal is good through, something, I was looking at this earlier. Anyway, we'll make sure it's still good.
There is one on there, I think it's the end of the month.
It does say, yeah, so we'll have to change that, of course.
Right, so if that's the case, then we can approve it for the basic package for the. Uh, how old are they, all right? Sorry.
Yeah, expired January nineteen.
Got a week.
That's a lot of expenditure, you could have that, correct?
Yeah. Well, it's really only, yeah, a thousand dollars, because the other eleven-hundreds are in there, or are expected.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Anything I, staffs job a little bit easier.
Let's, let's just do a quick motion on it, then we get official.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the web basic for three years, basic proposal.
Second.
I'll second that.
I second it, you can't keep my second.
Okay, who seconded?
Mary said.
It was Clint Harmon.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, anybody not in favor? Okay, ticketing proposal, we met with rodeo tickets online today. That is a pretty basic system, like we talked about before, that, uh, they set it up, they actually set up our account today. We'll open ticketing online, uh, May first, people can buy the tickets, uh, we'll have a link on the website, we can put things wherever we need to. They can buy the tickets, it will show us who's bought, wherever they're buying tickets from, it will show us the revenue per day. When they come to the rodeo, they'll just have an electronic ticket that we can scan, they go, uh, anyway, the, the fees for that. Like, if our rodeo ticket is ten dollars, so if someone buys ten tickets, it's a hundred dollars, whatever the processing fee is, it's, gosh, they told us it wasn't very much. They pay the processing fee, that goes to rodeo tickets online, a hundred dollars, no, two thousand. Pretty basic, um, really, I don't know, but we need to have that, we've talked about this several times, we've already approved it, but just kind of let you know that we're there. That, that setup, we'll be ready to sell tickets by May first, that we buy May first. All right, next, Frontier Days, um, we got the sponsor letter updated for this year. I don't think we changed anything other than some of the coverage in the letter itself, changed the dates, um, the sponsor levels, sponsored levels are the same. If we can TV set a pile of that for today, I would be glad.
Yes, you can fill them up, and maybe just want to do five of them, so we can keep them up.
We'll, we'll need to get everyone to go list their sponsors, do we know who?
Can TV set them?
Fair enough.
Oh.
We mail them out to Perry.
So everyone who sponsored last year.
So we go.
So if you want personally, you can do it, they like the personal.
But what I'm saying is, we'll need to get the list.
Yeah, we can get the list.
So that I don't go to the same place, stand and do it, right? Love the same people.
We can email them to talk to them.
Okay. Um, along the lines of Frontier Days, I would like to, by next meeting, have the schedule pretty much laid out. Kind of what the plan is, we, you know, we can work out the details, but let's have things pretty much ironed out by next meeting, so that we can be moving forward on planning. Uh, I was thinking through, uh, committee ideas and options, my thought was, and this is why we're having this discussion now, my thought was, we should have one committee with several people. Some who in that committee can focus on the road, the inside the arena stuff, and some on that committee who can focus on the outside of the arena stuff, but then work together. So it's not two separate committees, but one committee that's, you just have that broke up into, you know, inside and outside of the arena. But those, I think, I think it's important that they coordinate, so I don't think it should be two completely separate committees, is that right? Am I making any sense though?
It makes sense to me.
So if you have, I, I would like to start getting that set up too, in the, in really near future, so that we're not behind the A law on this deal. It's like, let's have this committee set up in the next month or two, at the latest, I think, so that they can start putting together ideas. I think we'll want to give them some direction on, here's the schedule, here's, here's what's going to sort of be happening, plan within that, rather than, hey, this is a brainstorming idea for a brainstorming committee. Fifty different new ideas, not that those are all bad, but we need to kind of have a direction, if that makes sense, unless, that, that's my thought, doesn't mean it's gospel. I told you we have this discussion, so if anybody has thoughts or opinions on that, please share.
Um, I can bring a schedule next time on this tape, what we did last year, and just change dates on it, is there anything that we, at this point, want to take off our app?
I don't, I can't think of anything.
Okay, all this script we had last year, it was open there.
Okay. Great, so, uh, should we just say by next meeting, let's have some names for committee members, see what we can throw together, is that reasonable?
How many people will we look for?
Uh, I don't know, that's a good question, what do you think?
And how do we go about getting volunteers?
Well, you call them up and say, if I go, you're going to be on the committee. I don't know, that's not the only way I would think.
Do you want a three burger, or you can have one burger, but you can have the other three?
I, I think we as councilmen would be very involved, but I think it would be beneficial to have a, a committee that's planning this and kind of move in that direction in the future. That's how I'll make do is do.
I like being involved, I don't like.
No, I agree.
One hundred percent, that's fine.
No, I agree.
Well, like ten, twelve, is that too many?
I was thinking five or six, but I.
So we get, we can get ten.
I mean, well, if you just, in my mind, you gotta like, you gotta find the balance, because if you get too many, you don't get anything done, if you don't have enough, you don't get anything done, so, gotta find that balance somewhere. So I, I, I don't.
But I can say if you're splitting into three people and not, that's, yeah.
Um, I, I think so.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think six would probably be plenty, but I, let's just be.
I'm not ready to go out and ask for sponsors.
Let's just be thinking out loud, I don't.
That's what I'm thinking, um, we've got this is main thinking. He's not probably going.
So maybe, maybe say six to eight. Because, you know, you might have some of those committee who, that's sort of like, you're not on the committee, you're able to get sponsorships, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just.
No, that's what I mean, with doing that, because of the break in hospital money.
Right.
Because I can't do that, you can't do that.
I do.
If I can, someone who doesn't have, we're probably doing that.
Right.
Sounds like California, he's used to taking other people's money.
Yeah.
But I don't. We're not asking, though.
Do you want me to ask the fire commissioner next week if anyone's interested in the underwriting?
Sure. Yeah, there's certainly more than welcome and encouraged, we can both do that. So anyway, I don't know, what do you guys think, six to eight, is that not too many, ten, twelve too many, I don't, I don't know.
I think eight, ten, something like that, that's.
Yeah, I think it's plenty.
I mean, that's definitely plenty, I'm just saying, if you're splitting into two groups, how many people do you want, like, trying to figure out food activities, vendors, like, you put that on two people, that's a lot.
Yeah, I, I think four is enough, right?
Yeah, how are divided, is it like someone in charge of moving the park, so I'll turn the vendor booths, the hour breaking up.
Probably let them figure it out.
It's almost in the schedule.
Yeah, you say, you guys figure out what you want to do, but like what Jeremy says, this group focused in the arena, this group focused.
Right, then they got to be together, because they've got to make sure that schedule's matched, you know, things jive, things flow.
And then, same thing, we're always there to help or do whatever. You have vendors, groupings, and concessions, how, how do we feel about the food vendors that we had last year? Do we want to do that again, do we want to go more? Uh, I will tell you that the three that we did have, all three of them talked to me after, said it was great, they loved it, you know, I think that's what they, they would be more than happy to come back. I just don't know how many, if we want to stick to a low number.
I think, I personally think for the next year, maybe two, we, we kind of stick to that low number, just kind of see how things go, so we kind of have an idea of. Hey, is, is this the direction we want to go with the one?
That's what we only did.
We have a little bit of a please.
We had the hot dog guy and the car doc guy and the nuts and stuff, he, the lemonade, he loved it. The only thing he requested is, oh, if we could find another place to put it, instead of in the dirt of the baseball field. He said people walking around and walking up to his, kicked up the dust, there's a lot of room last year too.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, some of those detaileries.
Yeah, that we could, that was.
Yeah, that's an easy clue.
That was the only thing that I had.
Those have a fence in the parking lot.
Yeah, they loved it, but, yeah, so. I'm sure they'll, once this gets out, they'll recall.
For sure.
And want to do it again, so we can stick to those same two.
Well, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be the same two, but I, I mean, we could say two to four or whatever, I, I just don't think we want to have a hundred.
I don't want to have ten or fifteen, no, two to three, I think, is the most.
Okay, I like it. Okay, well, if you, yeah, if you can start reaching out and talking to people and start suck it in, then we can talk about that, do that committee for together, basically. Okay, next item, the annexation benefits, this is, uh, the, this topic of discussion stems from last month's meeting where, uh.
Javier.
Javier, sorry, gosh, Javier, uh, processed about the possibility of considering the annexation of. Or answers.
Foot hills, no, no, or ter acres.
Or ter acres.
Too many.
Jeez. Um, and, and we've, you know, the topic we always get hung up on is, you know, what's the benefit to the city, Clayton brought. Clayton brought up, I believe. And I, you know, it's a great point. We need to have in our mind what some of those benefits are, so that when people come in and say, okay, well, what is, what do you consider a benefit, we have some answers. Especially with these smaller ones, so. Some of the, some of the ideas, um. That we've heard so far. Uh, one of the things I, I would actually like to do before I'm not mayor anymore, is, uh. I'd like to have a big flag in the city, have a canvas. You know, so maybe that's, maybe that's, maybe you say, hey, if you. You build this forest or something like that, what, there were some others.
They were like reducing the number of lots.
Reducing.
Yeah, you know, those are my few ideas, so like the big flag, some, having them buy the big flag. Uh, reducing the density, so. I think they were asking for Act One, that if we could get them down lower, it was your conservation subdivision, a bigger lots, maybe that would be a benefit. Uh, also. Uh, they will have to do the eight thousand dollar per lot annexation fee. But we could ask them to contribute more for water sewer projects, since they are a small subdivision. Uh, they can't do a big, like, tank or well, but they could contribute maybe say like ten thousand dollars.
Well, so that, that was the, when the eight thousand number came about, was because it's hard to, like, this, this is a smaller subdivision. How much money do you ask them to kind of, you know, you get a bigger subdivision, you get more money, so we, what we looked at is, there was a annexation that came in, and they gave us. I can't remember, a hundred thousand dollars and this and that, and it created. With the amount of loss they got, the eight thousand per lot, and that's how we kind of got that number. So you guys, if it's money we're asking for, you know, is eight thousand dollars the minimum, and you say. You know, maybe a contribution to help build the city hall is, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or that, or, you know, but that's, but eight thousand dollars. That's kind of what that was set up for, that we could use it on whatever we want, and we can say, we can use our water sewer projects that we had in the past. We could use it to build a building by a fly.
On the roads.
You, yeah, so. That's something we talked about, is eight thousand, you want to raise that? Because it's, you know, if it's a two lot annexation, it's hard to say, give us a hundred thousand dollars plus the eight thousand, you know, that's, you can say that.
How long has it been, eight thousand, Scott?
Wow, a long time. Ten years?
Well, and really, the purpose of tonight's discussion is just to get you thinking about, and throwing out some ideas of what, what would you consider a benefit? Um, and that we can, we can discuss how to make those work, or, you know, whether or not they can work, or whatever.
Yeah.
Really just give us something, coming up with ideas. We're going to say, you gotta give us a benefit, we ought to know what that looks like, we ought to know what we're looking for.
We can even give them a few options, and they can come to us.
Sure.
This is what forces rest.
Well, I think that's the idea we had, is like, let's kind of have a list, like, these are the things we like, you know, I don't want to see parks on there.
Right, we got enough parks, we got enough parks.
But that, and the one, everybody's like, let's, we'll do a little park.
But maybe a trail, like, you know, Cory was just here. If it can add into a place where we can add, and the trail have to. Use it or shut it, but that's, we've already kind of got that.
Well, I.
But that could be a benefit, like, oh, two more, you know, if we.
Sure.
That's the thing, that, we need the ideas, because right now, like, we're just waiting for them to come in and give us an idea. And we either shoot them down, or we go, oh, yeah, that is a good idea.
Right.
Instead of giving them any kind of direction when they come in. These are the types of things we consider a benefit.
Yes. Yeah, so if you have any of those ideas, we'd love to hear them tonight, if not, let's be thinking about those, because it, it, you know. It is important, and I think if, if we're going to tell people, you need to bring us a benefit, we need to know.
One, I don't know, I'm beating the dead horse over, but the one thing I think will benefit the city the most is commercial.
I agree.
And so if they can. You know, I, I don't know.
That's how, that's how we annexed Village of Lander Lake.
Yeah.
They were going to give us lots of commercial, we had twelve houses or ten houses.
Yeah, they're working now.
I agree with that, Shannon, I think that is one of the biggest benefits you can bring, but that's, that's one of the things that we can say, you know, hey, if you're bringing a big project, it needs to have a commercial component. But, you know, like, Javier's just talking about ten lots, and you can't say that. You know, you can't expect a ten lot situation to bring commercial aspect, but.
That's an idea, sort of.
But it certainly is one for a larger project, I think that's absolutely critical.
Well, I like, I like the law reduction. Like, if they were asking for ten, the law, if there's owned for ten lots, we say, well, if you do eight lots, like, that's a benefit, because there's two more lots that we don't.
Sure.
We don't have, so I like that as a benefit.
My, yeah, I think that's a, that's definitely a good option, we just need to use it.
Well, that's the thing, I don't want to just cram more homes in a smaller lot, right? It's like, no, you're going to give up two of your houses.
Right. Yeah.
So what option should I give Javier, because I think he is getting ready to get going, if he would like to build.
I think the law reduction over there makes some sense.
Yeah. What about the flag idea? Is this the one already requested with mandates?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We have two, they're, they're named two much the same. Just like the, just like all the roads in Francis, they all have the same name. Some of them just start with the F right now, Francis. Francis colleges. I do yours, but else.
I mean, to me, the, the flag is a, uh, is a benefit, but. In the scheme of things, that's probably, I don't know. Well, that's not a hu, that's not a huge expense.
If you annexed a minute ten lots, that's eighty thousand dollars, or eighty thou, eighty, eighty thousand bucks, um, that's the flag. But. Do we say a flag plus the ten thousand, you know, ten flag plus an eight blocks, you know, I don't reckon.
I think you do the plus, because.
I think it's a plus, for sure.
A lot of the subdivisions come in, like, Hidden Meadows, for example, they're doing infrastructure plus eight thousand lots, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, if the eight thousand standard is kind of. That is not what's benefiting.
Yeah, well, and honestly, I don't, I don't like a, a contribution to a building, I think. Whether that's, you know, eight, another eighty grand, or that's five for the building, or.
That's true, we could use it for a year. Okay. I'll give them those ideas.
Okay.
So Shannon wants to Costco.
Commercial.
Shannon wants, Shannon wants an Amazon, so she can stop.
Amazon, so you guys can go and pick up your own dark package. And I don't have to relate to every meeting because of it.
If we had an Amazon.
Absolutely.
We get one of those, they'll certainly flip my phone.
I, I can work them home with the leather bikes, probably.
Okay. Uh, we'll go on, council business, uh, any council reports?
I'd just like to say one thing. That it was brought up earlier. By Charlotte, the. The job that you get for Rees Trust America was very well received by everybody. I was in the audience, Clayton was as well, but the comments that I heard during and even after. Was phenomenal, I thought you did a great job. We had people come from our state, I don't know if you knew that.
I didn't know.
There was a couple of people who came from Wyoming. That knew people at the center. So it was very, very well received, and I think for the first one, it was, we had a pretty good turnout, more than what I had expected to see. When I drove up, but I guess why we bring that up, that you had a lot of applicants.
Yes, I agree. That, that was a great deal, um. All that gold that Santa says on that, for sure. I, I didn't know what to expect, and so some of my family wasn't there, but, uh, that, that.
Charlotte was really grateful for all of you.
Because that, that was, that was a big deal.
Patty and I went, and we were, she was quite impressed as well.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, I was, I was there, Brian was filming it for me, so I was watching it. No, listen, Jeremy, I was watching this while I still bring mail.
That's low speed.
Okay. But it, literally, it brought me to tears when he walked it over and. And put it on my dad's grave, and Lily said her little, little thing, I was like, why can't I be there, this is amazing, so I want to thank you all for being there, but I couldn't.
Absolutely. Great. Planner?
Uh, just one thing for me, and that's the planning commission has been working really hard this last year, um, doing the general plan, we've been talking about it. For almost a year now, and we got it to a place where we're, we're pretty close to being done. They're going to look at it at their meeting next week, and then if they do positively recommend it to come to council, I'm going to. Deliver a heart happy to each of you, or, you know, that to you, if you happen to be in the office. So, uh, probably in about a week, look forward to getting, uh, the next general plan review, and hopefully it will be on our agenda next month. I want to get to you early, just so you have a lot of time to look at it, because it's super important, it's our plan for the next five years. So try to give that some good attention before the next meeting, if you can. That's it, I mean.
Thank you.
You're gonna, you're not going to mail those?
No, just like.
Just email them, and I'll come get you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably send you guys a notice, just like, hey, planning commission is going to forward this to you, so come pick up your copy, or I can bring it to you, whatever. Or mail it.
Yeah, no, mail's a good way.
Put it, put it in an Amazon pack.
I didn't even hit it, I go. Alright, Scott?
Okay, so Billy. Um, great review of the plans, so they're getting the specs separated, so we can get it to the real contractor, so we can get it on that. Not sure where we're, fine, we'll have some somebody for the next meeting, but. I'll let you know.
Okay.
And then, on the forty acre, just kind of again, it's been, I sent out an email, um, we did that, and we decided, I don't know who else I was to go with. Neighbors, just to. Have two people, the same person, at least multiple pieces of ground, and what they want to do with the ground, he wants to improve the soil condition and stuff like that, rather than just grazing, he wants to make some improvements to it, so. So that's what we did, so that's all I got. Oh, and the CPG projects, um, just going to do two more surveys. The sixteenth, is anybody available, or are you available? At six forty-five or seven? In the night? Yeah.
Jeez. Well, there's.
Next week.
On the sixteen, the act should be.
What do you got, you got a big meeting? Yeah, you know how we do the interviews, just to say, hey, this is what we're wanting to do, are we going to meet with the council for that? So they can kind of know how to rate and rank the applications before this move to the state.
Is it, the word is that?
I'm not sure yet, I think it's probably, usually it's the boss at the county. Building.
Okay.
So I'll find out when it is.
Let me know, I should, I should be able to.
Yeah, she just let me know today that they were going to meet.
Okay. What about the, uh, wellhouse?
Wellhouse, yes, um. We know as a things of right amount of power, as we get it, I've been talking with, um, FX Construction, about them just continuing on and building a wellhouse, so we're working with them on that, so.
That has to be operational by like May.
June.
Okay. Whatever.
That's what it is.
Very soon. Because if I have to deal with. What we dealt with. Last time. Yeah.
Oh, they, they found us in the fields first. Flew a helicopter over the fires.
That's right, whatever it takes, geez, okay. Uh, I have only one report, we. Were having our fingers crossed, and we've been all kinds of things, hoping that we can get a applicant for Public Works. We actually had one applicant that we, like, quasi offered a job to, like you said, ah, nevermind. Then, just so happens that someone worked in, and sort of resume and application. Highly qualified individual, went through an interview, um, called all of her references, all of those things. Um, fit the bill perfectly. Made him a conditional offer, and he accepts it, and the same day, got his background checked, next day, got his, uh, drug test, and is ready to start, so. Um, if any of you know Scott Meyer, who lives in Loveville.
Oh, yeah. My grandson, he has a trucking.
Yeah, nice, nice guy, um, the trucking, the trucking business was having some issues, and so.
It's been parked there a lot, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah, Mike actually talking to me about this last night, he's pretty excited.
Yeah, he, and he was eager, so it's great, he's super qualified, and, uh, seems like a, I don't know him well, but seems like a really, really nice guy, and, uh, really well known, but.
It was awesome, though.
Yeah, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to pay for CDL, he's already got that, all of those things, so it, it worked out really well, so he'll be starting the next few days. He, yeah, well, he's, I know he's, I know he's been out and helping on the reaction, I'm actually asking. He, he's, he's for sure, no, because, uh, yesterday you got to talk to him? Yeah, so he probably started, he probably actually started.
Was he yesterday or the day before?
No, it's just.
I know, I thought more people worked yesterday.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't sure, actually started, or it was tomorrow, but. Either way, he's employed and ready to go, and we don't have the training, we can put him in a plow truck. Awesome. Today, so it's fantastic.
Could you run that plow up by my house about noon, instead of three in the morning?
Nice, uh, I'll get the ass.
Okay, stop an ass. And no, he can't back in the driveway, he's. No.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Okay, I have nothing else?
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We made it through that, Mary.